Good evening. We'd like to call the August 18th, 2022 Rutherford County School Board Meeting to Order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. James Evans.
To the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, unencouraged, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'd like to invite everybody to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First, item approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments, members of the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments, members of the board? If there are not, we'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next we have our spotlight. So, Mr. Jason Brown, Athletic Director at Eagleville, and I believe Mr. Pedego is here as well, Principal at Eagleville. We're here to recognize our Eagleville softball and baseball teams as state champions from last year. So, congratulations to everyone involved in that.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and thank you to the board for having us tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce the boys' state champs baseball team and Lady Eagles' state champion softball team. If anybody who's been around Eagleville knows how much pride we take in our athletic programs and how much community support we have around our athletic programs. And so, all that being considered, never had a team state championship in the history of Eagleville School. We had some individual state championships through the years, but never a team state championship. So, back in May, Lady Eagles, on a day in last May, won the first ever team state championship for Eagleville School, the first and only. And they held that distinction for less than 24 hours when the boys won their state championship the very next day. So, we have two team state championships. We're tremendously proud of them. Our community is just tremendously proud of them as well. So, I'm gonna ask the boys and the girls to come up. You guys wanna come up?
It's an important 24 hours.
And just present, we've got several boys here tonight. Not everybody could make it. Our coaches couldn't make it tonight. We've got coaches moving their kids into college, and we've got coaches coaching football. Boys, correct me if I'm wrong, Nate, 37-2? Is that right? 37-2 overall, undefeated in district play, and defeated McKenzie in the Class A state championship. Coach Elmore, you wanna come up and say a word about the girls?
I'm Coach Elmore Sanders.
Sanders.
I couldn't be more proud of this group of girls. They know, they have a special place in my heart. They set out for a goal and they accomplished it, and couldn't be more proud of you girls. So proud of you. Got more to get, right?
So, once again, thanks for having us. Thank you again for having us.
Congratulations. It's awesome. Okay. Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate you guys being here. Congratulations to both teams. That 24 hours matters, by the way, ladies. Next, we'll move on to visitors. Geneva Clifton will be our first visitor.
Hi, good to see you again. Geneva Clifton, President of the Rutherford Education Association. Tonight, I would first like to thank you and thank the board for the resolution and support of Rutherford County teachers that you passed back in July. It is much appreciated at this complicated time in our profession, so having your support means a lot to us. So, thank you very much. I also want to commend Mr. Holden, Mr. Estes, and Mrs. Johnson for their selfless work on behalf of Rutherford County Schools. This work is paramount to our students and teachers, and it is often thankless. So, REA wants to thank you for your time and dedication. And Dr. Sullivan, we wanna thank you for the opening of school, for visiting all of our schools, for letting teachers know that you understand that their personal home life is vital to being a well-balanced employee. So, we really do appreciate that. We also appreciate the videos and the communication that's been going, been going out to parents and to teachers. As we began this school year, many Rutherford County teachers received bonuses for staying in hard-to-staff schools or for taking a job in a hard-to-staff school. It is well-deserved, and I hope it has helped to retain and attract teachers. I did hear from some classified staff at those schools that they did not receive a bonus for staying or for accepting a position at those schools, so I just wanted to check on that and see if there's any way that that could be remedied. We know how vital they are to the smooth running of our schools. They're wonderful employees. You've talked about how staffing the classified employees has been really difficult. They need to feel fully appreciated. Also, I'm very glad that the salary schedule is being looked at for classified employees and for certified teachers. It's a really good start, and we look forward to working with you this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan, would you please let Geneva know how we are addressing? It's not, we're looking at this salary schedule everywhere. Would you let her know a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we are looking at steps. We are looking at the removing, especially for our classified staff, since that's what you brought up. We're looking at the steps to make sure there's more than just an increase every three to five years, and also looking to see the classification for all of those. What we felt like going through the salary studies where we looked at all of it was the best benefit.
Thank you. Our next guest is Jennifer Young.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for opening this up for people to visit. I'm coming, Jennifer Young. I've lived in Rutherford County for 24 years, and I have classically educated my children all 24 years. And I'm here in support of charter schools that would render a classical education available to the students in Rutherford County. I was very disappointed to hear that y'all turned down an opportunity to have a classical school here in Rutherford County. I have a special needs child in particular who benefited greatly from the classical model, and I'm here just to encourage everybody to reconsider the, if you have a chance. I recognize that this may not come back up as an opportunity, but I'm just highly disappointed. I just found out about it about a week ago, that y'all turned down that option. I have four grandchildren also coming up in Rutherford County who we plan to encourage my daughter and my son-in-law to also classically educate their children. And I would love for the public school system to encourage parents to have all the options that are available to teach their children. I believe it also would benefit them for your overcrowding issue that you sometimes encourage as people are moving into this county. I also believe it would help us have better qualified individuals in our county as they graduate from college. I have four children in this county. Three of them, one graduated from MTSU in the Mechatronics Department and worked at Nissan, one, and the other two graduated from Matla. One went into an apprenticeship program, and then one is, of course, having all my grandbabies for me. And so, that's way more important than anything else that you could do as an adult in my life. So, I'm just here to support all you. Thank you, guys, for your service and to keep your thoughts open to options for all parents in Rutherford County. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item, number eight.
And next, we have Director of Schools Performance Evaluation Instrument for the 2223 school year, and that is on Tab 2. I think you guys got a copy of that about a week and a half ago.
Are there any questions or comments on this item, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have Personnel Paid Holiday. So, recommended approval. Motion to approve Wednesday, November 23rd. It's a paid holiday and observed on Thanksgiving as presented. And I like to clarify that. Basically, all that we are asking to do is to close our central office that day, the same as our schools are closed. So, that's, our teachers are already paid for that day, and we're asking to close our central office.
Thank you for the clarification. Questions, comments, members of the board? Mr. Young?
We will be including this in our salary study to look at making everything equal.
Correct. So, one of the things that we know that we need to address is we have in-service days where our teachers are contracted to be there, and administrative days at the beginning of the year. It will be, it is definitely a budgetary item that we have to look at from a budget standpoint, but we would definitely benefit from having our classified staff at some of those days as well. So, that's something I would like to look at in the future as we look at this next budget season, and that would also give classified staff time to earn extra days as well. I mean, looking at how we do some of that, we have multiple calendars across the district of days that people work, whether it's 200, 220, all kinds of things, multiple, and we need to bring some of that in so that we are all on the same page.
Make it less confusing.
Much.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain?
All right, next, we have Placement of Position on the Approved Salary Index. As part of the salary study investigation, we've identified a few salary classified positions that need to be placed on a board-approved salary schedule. Our Communications Director position is one of these. Recommended approval. Motion to approve Communications Director position to be compensated on the certified salary schedule with an administrative index equal to the middle school principal. And again, this is the first one. We will have some with our engineering and construction, and then some with budget and finance as well next time.
Thank you. Comments, questions, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
Now, we'll add on that. The reason that one came up separate from the salary study is when we were going to give some information to that vendor, we started trying to find all of our salaries, and we don't have them all everywhere. So, that's where it came from. All right, number 11, Grant for Voluntary Pre-K Program. The VPK grant is used to partially fund our 21 voluntary pre-k programs that are housed at nine of our elementary schools. 12 classrooms are in the John Coleman Annex in Smyrna, and two classrooms are located at Roy Walter Annex in Laverne. Those classrooms serve our highest area of need in our district. All 21 classrooms are at capacity, 20 students per class, for a total of 420 students, with more than 90% of these students and families served qualifying based on household incomes at or below the poverty line. The program is designed to reach Rutherford County's at-risk early learners. The money's afforded to us by this grant ensure that all students have supplies and high-quality materials available to them at all times in our VPK classrooms. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the acceptance of the voluntary pre-k grant totaling $1,868,639.61 as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have Legal, Tab 3. So, Policy Adoption, First and Final Reading. The below policy changes are recommended on the first and final readings as they are necessary to take effect immediately for implementation during the 2223 school year. So, the policy changes, first, Policy 1.108 Nepotism. Changes the language to allow the Director of Schools and Board Chair to tentatively approve exceptions to the policy pending final approval by the Board of Education at the next regularly scheduled board meetings. Policy 1.602 Administrative Committees adds length of the term of two years for policy committee members. Policy 6.300 Code of Conduct clarifies discipline for vaping and possession of vapes. Policy 6.400 Student Guidance Program adds language to clarify standards and services for the school counseling program. So, the first, recommended approval of two motions. First one, recommended approval. Motion to suspend Board Policy 1.600 to specifically waive the two readings requirement for the above policies as presented.
Questions, comments, members of the board on the first motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve these policies all together.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next motion?
All right, next, recommended approval. Motion to adopt the first and final readings of the above policies as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, Financial Matters, Tab 4 and Salary Study. John, can you go ahead and pull up that salary study tab? The Rutherford County Board of Education requests to use Kansas City Public Schools Contract RFQC 22-03 for compensation study through Evergreen Solutions LLC at a cost of $64,500. I wanted to just go over again. We are looking at a couple areas, looking to address growth, looking to address teacher shortage, and then probably just as importantly, if not more, looking at employee retention. So, we're looking at really five main areas: educators, school-level administrative, district administrative, salary ranges among all of those positions, and then classified. We're looking at three areas there. We're looking at classified pay structure, the steps, and then how to compensate differently for different levels of education with classified. So, those are the areas we asked them to look at. Recommended motion to approve Evergreen Solutions to conduct a salary study of all classified and certified positions as described in the attached contract as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have Fund 177 Capital Projects Budget, Rebudgeting Prior Year Encumbrances. Each July 1st, outstanding purchase orders in this fund are liquidated. The funds go to fund balance with each in this fund, which is the account 34685, committed for capital projects. These purchase orders are for projects that have not been furnished by June 30th. This amendment takes those funds out of 34685, committed for capital projects, and rebudgets the expenditures for the carryover projects that were approved last year but have not been completed. This year, we have $3,831,851.40 in funds to rebudget. Recommended approval. Motion to amend the 2223 Capital Projects Budget, Fund 177, by reducing Account 34685, committed for capital projects, by $3,831,851.40, and by increasing Maintenance and Repairs Buildings Account 91300-335, and Other Contracted Services Account 91300-399, for a combined total of the same $3,831,851.40 as presented. It's a lot of numbers.
It's a lot. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments, members of the board? If there are none, we will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, Fund 177 Capital Projects Budget Amendment. Amendment for Time-Sensitive Projects Using Fund Balance and Amending New Internal Projects into Already Approved Ones. This amendment budgets $296,560 from Committed for Capital Projects Fund Balance of two unexpected repair and replacement items. $46,560 is for repair to the Rockville High Sewer Line, and $250,000 is to replace the visitor's side bleachers at Blackman High. In addition, $102,000 will be amended internally from the Smyrna Middle School fence to cover the replacement of the pre-k playground at Laverne Lake Elementary. $95,000 will be amended internally from Oakland Pool HVAC to Oakland Pool Deck and Walls. Recommended approval. Motion to amend $296,560 from Committed for Capital Projects Fund Balance. $46,560 is for the Rockville Sewer Line repair, and $250,000 is to replace the visitor's side bleachers at Blackman High. In addition, to reallocate $102,000 internally from the Smyrna Middle School fence to replace the pre-k playground at Laverne Lake Elementary, and to reallocate $95,000 internally from the Oakland High Pool HVAC to Oakland High Pool Deck and Walls as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
Next, Special Projects Account Supervisor Position. The Finance Department is requesting an updated job description for the Accountant Supervisor Position to include revised language and updated job description. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the updated Accountant Supervisor Job Description with the revised language and updated job description as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, so now that we have approved the funding, now we need to approve the facilities. So, same things over again. 14 Facilities in Construction, Tab 5. Amendments for Fund 177 Engineering Construction is requesting to make the following changes to the Fund 177 Funds Allocation. One, Water Services Sewer Repair Fee for Rockville High School, $46,562. Two, Add Laverne Lake Pre-K Playground Replacement of $102,000. Three, Add Blackman High Visitor Bleacher Replacement, $250,000. Four, Add Oakland High Pool Deck and Walls, $95,000. Recommended approval. Motion to approve Funding Requests for the Fund 177, and no additional funds requested from the board as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, B, Oakland High Storage Buildings. Principal John Marshall has requested two storage buildings to help with material storage to utilize other spaces in the building. Engineering Construction has reviewed the request and approves. Cost for the two storage buildings is $13,724, and the funding will come from the General Purpose Fund Maintenance Line item. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the request from OHS for two storage buildings as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, C, Segal High and Segal Middle MTE-EMC Easement Request. Due to the TDOT Road Project that's widening Thompson Lane, MTE-EMC is required to relocate the overhead service lines. This relocation will require new easement from Rutherford County Schools. The attached drawings show the extended easement boundaries required. There is some overlap with the baseball field fence and the small possibility that at some time they may need to take down the fence for repair work and put it back up. MTE-EMC is a great partner, and should that happen, we'll work together. There is no major conflict at the middle school. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the MTE-EMC easement request for Segal High and Segal Middle as presented, and we are going to pray and hope that that doesn't happen on the opening day of baseball like we talked on Tuesday, but hopes are not great.
Yikes. Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have a Smyrna Elementary Outside Classroom Request. Principal Vanessa Ritters requested to build an outdoor classroom utilizing the following cost breakdown. Dow Smith Construction and their contractors will be donating Phase 1. Engineering and Construction has met with the contractor and the school staff to review the request. Based on the documents provided and Mr. Smith's commitment, we approve the project. John, will you go ahead and pull that picture up too, so they can see what it looks like as I'm reading the rest of this, because it's pretty amazing? Phase 1 will be a usable structure for the school, and the remaining phases can be added as funds are raised. This project is at no cost to the board. Phase 1, $100,000, site preparation, building of the concrete staging rails, and electrical circuits for outdoor plugs of the stage. Phase 2, $40,000, building of the roof structure and rear wall on the stage. Phase 3, $8,000, building and install the 16 benches for the outdoor classroom at $500 each. Phase 4, $20,000, building and install the eight visual barrier benches, $2,500 each. Phase 5, $15,000, install the posts and sunshades of the two sides of the stage. Recommended approval. Motion to approve Outdoor Classroom Project for Smyrna Elementary as presented at no cost to the board.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, it's beautiful. It is.
Questions, comments, members of the board?
Yes, I got a comment. Thursday, Tuesday night after the board meeting, I went by Smyrna High School to see the Middle Stewart's Creek play, and there stood Mr. Dow Smith. So, I walked over and spoke with him, and personally thanked him for this particular project, and I said, "Thank you for your donation," and he said, "Well, which one?" And I said, "Okay, this is my..." So, he does a lot, and please, y'all, send him a thank you card, send him cookies. He does a lot in our community, and we're very thankful for him, so.
Yes, absolutely.
And it was a great evening. Great football field and everything. Beautiful.
Any other questions or comments? I would agree, Dow Smith and his company do a lot of, a lot for our schools and our community. Thank them every chance you can. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have E, CMTA Design Fee Proposal for Rockville Elementary and Stewart'sboro Elementary. As part of the Fund 177 approved projects for 2223, the HVAC projects for Rockville Elementary and Stewart'sboro Elementary, Engineering Construction is requesting to utilize CMTA. Design fees are attached. All funds for CMTA would come from Fund 177 approved funds for each project. CMT is the firm that provides the energy audit and is an approved vendor. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the design fee proposal for CMTA for Rockville Elementary and Stewart'sboro Elementary as presented. And again, I'd thank the board. This is something we looked at in trying to get a hold of some of our deferred maintenance. These were two big-ticket items that we moved some funding for to go ahead and address some of that backlog.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
Next, Maintenance Overtime Pay. At this time, all personnel who work over the allotted 40 hours per week are credited with comp time. Maintenance personnel who are called in after hours are also compensated the same way. They cannot do their work remotely, and they must come into the district office first. Engineering would like to propose to pay them overtime when they are off-campus and called back in. This would help offset the cost of fuel for them to come in and then go back home. If they are still here instead, they would receive comp time. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the payment of overtime for maintenance personnel to help compensate for fuel as presented, and as we discussed Tuesday, we don't believe this will be over $25,000.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we have the Maintenance Warehouse Material Center Position. The Engineering and Maintenance Departments would like to reclassify a position from Maintenance Warehouse to Warehouse Material Center. Due to growth in schools and a large number of packages being left on our back door or back dock, we would need to have someone at the dock most days. This is not a request for an additional position, and no additional costs are requested. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the reclassification of the Maintenance Warehouse Position to Warehouse Material Center as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? Will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Next item?
All right, next, we discussed this on Tuesday night, but any further discussion on the radio tower request for high schools and possibly others?
One thing that I would like to add, Mr. Reed, if in the future we do consider doing this, is that there's a caveat in the contract for us, Rutherford County Schools, and our, maybe the emergency search services in the county to have room on that said pole. Because we don't want to have to rent it from them, and we want to make sure that we're taken care of before they are.
Okay? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Move on.
All right, next, Design Updates for Riverdale, Smyrna, and Oakland. We discussed that on Tuesday nights. Anything else free to discuss as well?
Any other questions or comments on the item, members of the board? Okay, next item?
All right, next, Transportation Update. I'm sure you talked about our bus status, but I also want to recognize this time our updated Transportation Director, so Ms. Wanda Barnett is our new Transportation Director. Wanda has an amazing respect from our bus contractors and just our transportation staff and our principals in general. She originally worked at Christiana, is that correct? Christiana Elementary and Middle School, and has just kind of continued her way through our system. So, surely you work with her on a daily basis. Anything you want to add to that?
Glad to have her.
We echo your statement.
You won't tend more like her writing.
Dr. Sullivan, I think that Ms. Barnett would like to speak to the board and address them.
Mr. Evans is being...
She definitely does not.
Yes.
Welcome to your new position. Thank you for all you do for us. Anything else on this item? Any questions or comments, members of the board? Okay, moving on.
All right, next, we have K, Rutherford County Board of Education Extended Sessions Bus Contract for 2223. Transportation has submitted the Extended Service Contract for the Fall Session from 2223 school year. This contract's the same contract as last year with changes to Page 2, Section 1.3, adding uninsured motorists to insurance language, and Page 7, Section 5.2, for the compensation dollar figure of $225 per day. Additionally, Section 5.2 operation and closure change. Recommended approval. Motion to approve the Extended Session Contracts for the Fall of 2223 school year as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, members of the board? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any member wish to abstain? Okay?
All right, next, we have our financial report. We discussed this on Tuesday night. We'll be going over our financials once a month, just the overall, excuse me, expenditures and revenue that we have for each month. We have a Health and Ed meeting, I believe. It's the 23rd. Is that right, Brian? Health and Ed's the 23rd? The only thing, yes, this coming Tuesday. The only thing that we would have on Health and Ed is the amendment for adding the funds that TOA gave to us for our additional athletic trainers. That's all that we have on this session that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Insurance update?
Dr. Evans?
New updates, just, just a reminder, open enrollment will be the Tuesday after Labor Day and running through October 31st.
Thank you. Next?
Yes, I have several, so I feel like it's important. We're all kind of on the same page. So, the first thing I wanted to talk about was just our growth in general. So, I got, I was at a New Directors of Schools Conference the last two days, remaining the last two days, and just wanted to give numbers. So, our 2021 enrollment, so this is BEP from the State Board of Education and what we were paid on. In 2021, we had 46,750 students. What we finished with in the 2023 seven hundred and fifty students. What we finished with, and these are true students that we finished the year with, last year, forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. So last year, we added two thousand two hundred and twenty-three students in enrollment. We have so far, and looking at our staffing report, we're already up seven hundred and twenty students. I'll send the board the new update, but that is following almost identical trend where May to August, we're about a third of the way through the year, and if we take that growth from last year, a third of that growth is about seven hundred kids. And so I think we were all hoping we would see a somewhat of a slowdown to get us back to our typical thousand to twelve hundred. We expect another spike after Labor Day. We usually get a big spike from northern schools or west coast schools when those students realize we actually start in August and not in September, and so I envision those numbers to continue to grow. So growth, thank you to all of our principals, our teachers, our transportation staff, attendants, because that is a big ordeal in adding that many students. Just for a comparison, the average district in Tennessee is just under twenty-eight hundred kids. So we have almost added a district in enrollment in a year. Next thing to talk about is third grade retention, and just to give you an update and kind of to calm the nerves and tell our parents where we're going with this. So this is Tennessee code annotated forty-nine, six, thirty-one, fifteen. So what that law that was passed two years ago asks, it says that third graders, current third graders this year, need to show proficiency. So if a parent is looking at their scores, then that would be mastered or on track, those two top levels, on their third grade ELAT gap. Then the law says they may be required to attend summer camp or tutoring. There are all kinds of exceptions. For example, if an English language learner has been less than two years, and if they're in third grade, there's a pretty good likelihood it's less than two years, then they would be exempt. A student has a reading disability, they would be exempt. If they've previously been retained, they would be exempt. And then it goes through, they may be retained, or they can attend to summer camp or tutoring. And so we know that we are offering all of those anyways, and so when you first hear that, oh my goodness, I have a third grader in the system, so I'm personally concerned as well. And so when you hear that, all third graders are going to be retained, because that's a large number that don't statewide score on track or mastered. But we would go through and have some of our students automatically would be excluded, and then we have summer camp, we have tutoring for the next fall. We will be sending a lot of information to our parents. We also have the option to retest students throughout the, during the summer, and it doesn't say that they have to meet grade level at that time. They just have to show progress. Progress can be loosely defined, and so our goal is not to make sure that we are just retaining every kid, but we want to make sure kids are ready for the next grade level, and also not overload some of our other grades too. So we'll be working through the logistics. We just want to make sure that our parents and our teachers and principals knew that we are working on it as a district, but we want to, we'll be sending more information in a letter to parents. We'll also have our parent tips on Monday. We'll be with our English Language Arts Curriculum Elementary Team. They'll be doing their video on Monday about reading tips and what to do at home. Second thing I want to talk about is the seventh grade. I was a middle school principal, so the only thing I knew how to call this was the seventh grade apocalypse. This is when your seventh grade students who do not receive their TDAP immunization, not COVID, so let's go ahead and make that up. Nothing to do with COVID whatsoever. This is the TDAP and IMR vaccine that they're supposed to get for seventh grade unless they have religious reasons. If students do not have that by next week, I believe the twenty-second, then they are supposed to go home. That's a state law. This has been in place for many, many, many years. Our nurses at the schools have been calling each kid individually to tell them which ones, and it is amazing how many students on Monday and Tuesday of next week, all of a sudden their paperwork shows up. Regardless, no matter how much we communicate this, I just want the board to be aware, you will probably get parents, but this has been communicated to parents years and years and years in advance. So that's one. Last thing I want to talk about was the age appropriate materials bill, because that's gotten a lot of attention on social media the last couple of years. This is chapter seven forty-four, public chapter seven forty-four, and it will be Tennessee code annotated forty-nine, six dash thirty-eight. So what that requires is that each school operated by an LEA, and stay with me, because there are several things here, I'm just kind of going through it. So what that requires, and the ultimate intent, we believe, was to maintain a list of materials in the library. We already have that as a district, and we have had that for well over a decade using one of our vendors that we have that anybody can log in and see what's in the library at their school. The second requirement is you adopt a policy for developing and reviewing materials in the library collection. We already have that. That's policy four-point four oh three. We've had that reconsideration, again, for years that we have had. The next thing you have to do is if you go through the entire, and we're not going to go through the whole policy tonight, but if you go through that entire policy and something is deemed inappropriate, then you remove that material deemed not to meet the criteria listed above. Where a lot of the conversation has come around involves what materials are included in the library collection. The library collection means materials, and this is coming straight from the law. So library collection means materials made available to students by a school operated by an LEA or a public charter school, and I want to highlight this portion, because I think this is where a lot of confusion can come in, but does not include materials made available to students as part of the curriculum. And so we have adopted curriculum. We have things that teachers are using day in and day out to teach instruction. So these would be materials that, but does not include that. Then it talks about materials include books, periodicals, newspapers, manuscripts, film, print, documents, microfilm, didn't even know those were still around, but apparently they are, discs, cassettes, another one, videotapes, video games, applications, and subscription content. So I bring this up, there is the law. I, again, was with the commissioner yesterday, and one of the things the commissioner talked about was there are three areas that the department doesn't necessarily have a lot of control over, one of those being charter schools, because that's the charter commission. Second being textbooks, they sit on the textbook group, but then that ultimately is approved by the textbook commission. And then third, library materials, because there is a new library commission. And that library commission is not fully in operation yet, and so with for all intents and our purposes, what we are looking at, we already have all of our materials catalogued as far as that are library materials. If there's something controversial in our library, then we do have that policy four-point four oh three, that a parent, student, or anyone can bring that complaint, and we have an entire policy there. Our classroom materials, most of those, again, are covered because they're in the library, or they are part of the, in the school course curriculum. So in the event there is something we need to address, and it's large of a district, we'll have to address things as we move forward, just because that's the way our society is. And we will address those as needed, but there's no action that's really needed. Our teachers, you see it on social media right now, people going through and doing all kinds of things if they needed. Based on this guidance, I don't believe that's necessary right now. So I wanted to give an update on kind of where we are, and if we need to, I emailed all RCS last Friday and kind of told them this thing as well, but I wanted to bring that up. Last thing, is it for the end of general discussion, if you'll let me have end of general discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot of information, but we do appreciate it. No, no, we appreciate it. Ms. Maxwell?
I'm going to try to be brief tonight. I have an article from the Commercial Appeal that came out last week, and it's entitled, "On the First Day of School, No Tennessee Student or Private School Yet Approved for Voucher Program." The Tennessee Department of Education told the USA Today Network that in Tennessee on Tuesday had not yet approved or denied any applications for families or schools as of Monday morning. The education savings account or voucher program allows eligible students in Shelby and Davidson Counties to use public money to pay for private school tuition. It's been challenged in the courts by both Metro Nashville and Shelby County, as well as by number of families opposing the pulling funding away from traditional public schools. The program narrowly approved in 2019 as a centerpiece of Governor Bill Lee's education agenda, but it's been tied up in the courts for years. So when the courts gave it a green light last week, supporters celebrated. Earlier this summer, the governor said that more than two thousand families signaled their intent to apply, but as of Monday morning, only thirty families had submitted an actual application, according to information from the Department of Education spokesperson, Brian Blackley. The department received applications from forty schools, he said, noting that application process has closed. None of the thirty families' applications have been reviewed for approval or denial. The department has yet to approve any of the applications submitted by the schools, he said. We are continuing to review and have not made determinations of eligibility. The state has argued that the program is intended to give students in districts that have low-performing schools a chance to attend private schools in the hope of a better education. Attorneys have insisted delaying the program would harm these students. Lately said Tuesday, the number of official applications is changing daily, but didn't indicate how exponential the department expects the growth. The department did not say whether any of the thirty applications came from families outside of the two eligible counties. The state gathered the two thousand-plus families who expressed intentions to apply via an application window opened for approximately two weeks, Slickly said, from the time the injunction lifted in mid-July to the end of July. The official application, which has since garnered the thirty families' responses, was posted in the days after the application for intent closed. Previous approvals indicate the number of private schools interested in the program has also declined. Before the department relaunched the program website on July nineteenth, more than sixty participating private schools were listed on the state's ESA website.
Thank you. Appreciate the information. How about Federin?
I have a little bit for that, too. This is a statement from the Secretary of Education regarding the National Center for Education Statistics, and U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, released this statement below, "Following the release of the National Center for Education Statistics, June 2022 data that highlights an improvement in student performance and three-quarters of public schools offering summer learning and enrichment programs to help students catch up. This data shows that through the efforts of the federal government with the strong partnership of school leaders, teachers, school staff, families, parents, and students across the country, students have made significant progress just over the course of the 2021, 2022 year school year. Additionally, this data shows that school districts across the country are using American Rescue Plan funds to expand access of summer learning and enrichment programs. Our more school counselors meet the mental health needs of students and educators, accelerate student learning, provide high-quality tutoring, and more. Key findings from the NCES School Pulse Panel include fifty-six percent of public schools using high-dose tutoring to support pandemic learning recovery, with the most schools leaders rating the strategy as extremely or very effective. Seventy-five percent of public schools offering summer learning and enrichment programs, with thirty-three percent of those schools reporting that they had increased their summer learning and enrichment programs, and a double-digit drop in the percentage of students that schools are reporting at behind grade level in at least one subject. Seventy-two percent of public schools offering mental health supports, and nearly all public schools offering in-person learning. Since education was disrupted in March 2022 due to COVID-19, the administration has prioritized recovery for students through multiple efforts, he said. In addition to providing one hundred and thirty billion in ARP funds for K through twelve education to support the safe reopening of K-12 schools and to meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. Appreciate the information. Any questions for Ms. Maxwell? Okay, next is general discussion. Is there any general discussion this evening? I personally would like to thank Mr. Estes and Mr. Holden for your service on the school board. Tonight is our last board meeting. Mr. Estes, for your long commitment to education, for being a great leader, a great example to me, and for your service to our community. We appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Okay.
And personally, it's been an honor to serve on this school board for four years. I was serving in a different capacity when I got here. I'll serve in a different capacity when I leave here. I cannot thank the staff and the teachers more. You guys, I've said this many times in my service here, I was a parent with kids in the system. I had no idea what went into education before I got here. You guys are heroes, and I do appreciate you. It's been an honor to serve. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for your support while I've been on here. Everyone here has been very supportive and helped with information as far as decision-making and what we're doing. And I, too, it greatly saddens me to leave tonight. I'm not going, I'm not going to be untransparent about it, I guess, but I do love being on the school board. I appreciate the opportunity. Everyone over here, thank you so much for all you do for the schools. And I've got grandchildren in the schools, they're Rutherford County School students, and I just, again, thank you very much for all of your assistance, your help, your, everything you've done for me while I've been here. So, thank you very much.
It's been an honor to serve with you. We are good.
Alright, so first and foremost, our next board meeting will be September thirteenth and fifteenth with our new board members. Looking forward to that. I think the hard part of this transition and the new part, I hope you guys have noticed, we have definitely as a school board made a concerted effort to make sure that even though we may have differing opinions, we are definitely at least all working on the same page, and I hope that that will continue as we move forward, and I have no doubt with Mr. Arby, Mr. Rosales, Mr. Tedwell, that that will continue as well. But in looking at that, of course, we have three board members, so this is their last meeting. I can't thank you enough, because the last couple of years, even for Mr. Holden for the last year, what you dealt with was not what you signed up for. You signed up for making sure that we were promoting a school system and making sure decisions were best for our students, and you got stuck in situations that that was not what you were necessarily looking at each and every day. Became politicized, where we did not have discussions on a daily basis about our students and about the achievements or the challenges they were having, and that is nobody's fault. It's just the unfortunate part of the last two years. So thank you for that time, and really it just comes down to, you know, when you're called, and leaders sometimes have to lead, even when they're not ready to, and you guys were in that position. So thank you very much. First, I want to thank Mr. Holden. So if you'll come up, we have a plaque for you. And so, Mr. Holden, this just says, "Appreciation, Mr. Holden, Member of Rutherford County Board of Education, Member of the 2021 Office, 31st, 2022, Providing Unselfish Devotion, Service to Students, Teachers, and Citizens of Rutherford County, presented by our school board and has our name on it. So I thank you for your service." And next, we have Ms. Johnson. So Ms. Johnson served, of course, as our chair the last year, and has been involved in some very difficult, tough decisions during a tumultuous time, and those decisions didn't go unnoticed. So thank you for your leadership in every way. And I didn't read your dates. I am sorry. What were the dates? You sure? I know it's a four-year term, so September?
[inaudible]
Perfect. My apologies. And then last, we have Mr. Estes for his eight years of service. Personally, Mr. Estes, I want to thank you for not holding against me that I came to Rutherford County or came back to Rutherford County. It has been a longstanding joke that when I opened Rocky Fork Middle and was chosen to open Rocky Fork Middle, Mr. Estes was not thrilled that we did not go with a Rutherford County person for that job and let our director, Mr. Odom, at that time know that, that it was not a good move. So we've developed a good relationship since that point, thank goodness, but thank you, Mr. Estes, for your... And then last, our assistant superintendents and family members in our current board. We do have just a little something for you in our director's conference room. Once this is over, you can just stay for a couple of minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and if there is no further business, we will be adjourned.